Good evening. I'm Ann Gibson, Chief Communications Officer for New Hanover County Schools. Thank you for joining us tonight for our third and final Community Town Hall Meeting. We're getting ready for our transition to Plan B on October 12th, so please call in with your questions to the number on your screen or enter your questions in the Facebook Live chat to ask questions of our panelists tonight. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Charles Faust, New Hanover County Schools' new superintendent, to kick us off.
Good evening, everyone. What an honor to be able to sit here and I'm with the entire executive team and answer questions. We are devoted to make sure that we get this right as we bring students back to school and employees face-to-face with students. And our goal is to make sure that everyone is in a safe environment and we want to answer questions, so we're ready to kick this off.
Thank you. Now we'll take a minute for panelists to introduce themselves.
I'm Dawn Brinson. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Technology and Digital Learning.
LaShawn Smith. I'm the Deputy Superintendent and in charge of all things teaching and learning in the district.
Good evening. I'm Mary Hazel Small. I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening. I'm Julie Varnum, Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, which includes Special Education.
Good evening. I'm Eddie Anderson, Assistant Superintendent for Operations, which includes Maintenance, Facilities, Transportation, and Child Nutrition.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Murray, Director of Testing and Accountability.
Good evening. I'm Shamika Schufert, Director of Career and Technical Education.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Jackson. I'm the Director of Student Support Services.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Lewis, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director, Ashley High School.
And now for our first question. Regarding mandatory face coverings, who is responsible for ensuring teachers and staff are wearing masks at all times?
So I'll take that question. Honestly, I think it's the responsibility of all of us to be knowledgeable about the mask requirements for ourselves and for our children, and as staff, knowledgeable about the mask requirements for ourselves and our students. So it will honestly be a united effort among everybody to make sure that we're all compliant and protecting one another.
Thank you. What if a student forgets to bring their device to school?
Students are not required to bring their devices to school. The devices that were checked out from the school system, they have the option. We've always had the option of a Bring Your Own Device policy where students could bring their personal device, but again, it's not required. There will be some devices at the school, but the goal of the instruction is not to be during the AABB schedule, is not for the students to be sitting in front of a device the whole time.
And how are devices being cleaned between classes and uses?
The cleaner that Operations has provided to clean the desks and stuff between students is the same cleaner that will be used to wipe down devices. They will spray the cloth. We've passed instructions on to the principals.
Yeah, I can add today. We have developed processes and procedures in accordance with the CDC guidelines and are using our products that are all on the EPA's list of approved products for fighting COVID-19. The procedures in between class changes or maybe at an elementary level that, you know, during times when students aren't in the room, teachers would wipe down desks or other high-touch areas within the room such as keyboards and devices.
What if a teacher's family member, such as their child, tests positive? Are both the teacher and student required to quarantine?
So if we have a teacher whose family member has tested positive, that teacher is going to report that prior to or at least at screening that happens every day. And so if they have a family member that lives within their home that they've been in contact with, that means they've had an exposure and they would not be at school during that time unless at an appropriate time they had a test and potentially tested negative. But generally, an exposure means that the teacher will be out for 14 days. And so if the teacher had been in the classroom after exposure but later learned of the family member's positive test, then of course, we would involve our school nurse in any contact tracing to determine if there had been close contact or exposure of any students. I will add that our requirements of using a mask, wearing a mask by everyone at all times and maintaining six feet of distancing at all times will most likely eliminate transmission or exposure in the school setting.
We understand the plan has changed to Plan AABB. Will students still be able to remain at home on remote learning until the family is ready to send them back during their rotation?
Families will be provided the opportunity for their children to continue with remote learning in Plan B. Once we do transition to Plan A, we will have to make a determination about what will be available to families. And at this time, that only option is virtual, the virtual academy.
What time will school begin for high schoolers?
School will begin for high school students. Instruction begins at 8:30.
And what time will instruction begin for Group B students that are still on the current remote schedule?
If it's elementary student, their instructional day begins at 7:50. And again, high school students, their instructional day begins at 8:30.
What is the email to send the bus attestation form, to submit the bus attestation form?
Yes. There was a typo in the English version of the bus attestation form and I forgot the dot, sorry. That has been corrected. The corrected version is online, nhcs.net, under the Ready, Set, Return tab. But it is bus.attestation@nhcs.net.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add, because if anyone is going, "What is that?" So this year, bus transportation will look a little different and riders are required to have a parent/guardian attestation form on file prior to their students riding the bus. The attestation form says that the symptom screening and temperature check will occur at home before the student leaves to go to the bus stop. We will not be doing screening at the bus stop. So please go online, print out the form. You can email it to the bus.attestation@nhcs.net or you can drop it off at your school.
And when are those forms due?
They are due before Friday the 9th. Thank you.
The district is saying that children can take off masks for indoor rigorous activity. Why is it safe for children to do indoor PE without masks? And how can parents opt out of any indoor activity that does not require masks?
That's a really good question. We want to make sure that if students need to engage in strenuous activity in PE, that we will ensure that they are able to respirate or breathe properly. But we also are most concerned with PE happening, PE and recess as much as possible happening outside, in the outdoor air, where they can have enough spacing, enough distancing, and then any strenuous activity for them not to wear their masks or further away from their peers and other adults. But if a parent is concerned that they don't want their child to participate in that kind of activity, I think it'll be good just to have a conversation with your child's teacher or principal so that you can have a better understanding about what that might look like for your child's schedule.
I have a few more mask questions. Will masks be provided to students?
Yes. So students are not required to wear the masks that are provided by the school system, but every student will get five masks that meet what we know as best practice for quality of mask, which would be multi-ply cotton, and they're washable and able to be worn repeatedly.
If mass, the provided masks, will any of the masks include the school's name and mascot?
So that would depend upon the particular school. I know some schools have created or have had masks made with their logos. I'm wearing one right now. I'm not sure how schools are going to share those among their students. I know that staff have been provided those, but that's a good question to ask your school.
And will masks be sized appropriately for students?
So we have the shipment that we received from the governor's office for five masks, five multi-ply cotton masks for every individual. We're all one size, although the information did share that these would fit all-sized faces. We realized that we would like to have smaller masks for our preschoolers that will be wearing masks and for our younger elementary folks with smaller faces, and so we have child-sized masks on the way.
My son plays in the band. Will they be having marching band and will they have band classes?
The district has put together Return to Arts Educational Program Guidance. It includes in that guidance protocols and procedures for all of our arts programs. We will have band classes and the decision in regards to marching band, our ultimate goal is to bring back those activities to the fullest extent possible. But a lot of that will depend on the availability of the spaces for our children to practice. So right now, where we are is we're asking, or we're planning for our choral programs and our band programs to return, but we're looking to have as much of that activity occur outside when weather is permitting. So it will look very different, but we are working to bring back all of our arts education programs because we understand just how important those are to our students in trying to ensure that they are as safe as possible for our students and our staff.
Okay, thank you. Many classes at the middle school and high school level have nearly 40 students. For the A/B schedule, this means that they're For the A/B schedule, this means that there are classes that may have as many as 18 to 20 students at a time. How will safe distancing be possible in a class of that size?
So I have been visiting schools over the past two weeks with, along with several people on my team. And we've been assisting teachers, principals and staff in preparing and setting up classrooms and other spaces for social distancing. Some of the larger classes that do reach 20 or 19, 20 have been difficult. But I have to say, our teachers have been awesome. It's been so nice to have them back in the spaces and they have been so creative in coming up with ways to make the classroom not only warm and inviting, but fit those larger numbers. A lot of times, they just call us up to go look and make sure that, you know, they've interpreted everything correctly. They've set it up correctly. I am very confident after spending two weeks doing this that we can accommodate those numbers and that the schools will be ready and we will be social distancing.
Will there be adequate time to clean in between each class?
Well, there will be. At the secondary level, you know, the, it doesn't take, it doesn't take but a few minutes to clean. We're asking that the teachers spray the desk. By the time they get to the end, they can take the rag and wipe, wipe off the first desk they sprayed and go down the line. The product has a three-minute, what they call a three-minute dwell time. We're going to try to meet that. But if we, if we don't, it doesn't, the product doesn't last as long on the surface, but it's still effective in disinfecting. So we'll, we'll have adequate time to do that between classes.
How will we be ensuring that our children do not get too much screen time?
We have increased the number of classes specifically for middle school students, but that does not necessarily mean that we've increased the expectations for screen time. I think parents need to communicate any concerns that they have with their child's teacher. And their child's teacher can work with the administration at the school to make sure that they're designing instruction that's appropriate. So just because we're increasing the number of sections or the opportunities for interaction does not mean that those interactions have to increase the overall screen time for students.
Similar question about the possibility of revisiting block scheduling for middle school students to cut down on screen time, specifically.
Well, I think there's always the opportunity to gather feedback to ensure that we're doing what's in the best interest of our students. But I think it's also important that we have consistency and that we provide an opportunity for children to have access to the curriculum. And so we want to make sure that students are engaged and that teachers are designing lessons in such a way that it will allow children to progress through the entirety of the curriculum this school year.
Will students be sharing materials like textbooks or papers?
Actually, we have, in consultation with our public health department, we understand that transmission on paper, for example, such as touching a piece of paper and handing it to someone else is a really low risk. But we are focusing on not having students share materials in general. If a student touches a piece of paper that someone else was using or if a student turns in a piece of paper to the teacher, there's not as much concern about that. But we are not going to be creating situations where students will be sharing materials in general, especially such as pens, pencils and other utensils or manipulatives.
Will spectators be allowed at indoor high school sporting events such as basketball?
So at this point, we are not allowing spectators. Oh, I'm sorry. I can defer to Mr. Lewis. I apologize.
At this point, the High School Association has not allowing us to have any spectators. And that will only be determined on where the governor moves us on as a state as we get closer to our contest dates.
But I will add, we are looking at some software that would allow families to be able to view their children playing sports.
Will after-school activities be allowed?
Right now, I don't think that we've had that discussion. Again, very similar to the athletics. I think it really depends on where we are in terms of the governor's order. But right now, we've not had those conversations to move forward with after-school activities.
Will this district be enforcing wearing masks over the nose and mouth and not pulling it off when talking?
Yes. Proper mask use is being taught to our staff and our staff are creating instructional videos and tools so that we can support that with our students. But the expectation is that a mask is properly worn over the nose and mouth.
How do parents know which days their student attends AA or BB? And when will schools be notified? I'm sorry, when will schools notify parents?
Yeah, I'm surprised at this point, if, if parents do not know, then they should contact their schools. Schools will be reaching out to all parents to let them know what schedule they're on. So if, again, if you have not heard, please reach out to your school.
Have, has the district increased the number of bus drivers?
We have not. And actually, you know, through the last six months or so, we've, we've been in the same situation as a lot of other businesses and we've lost bus drivers. But as, as I said earlier, our transportation is going to look, our bus transportation will look different this year. We've, we've had to do that to respond to reduced capacity on our buses and the other regulations that, that are being applied. But it's also given us the opportunity to kind of review what was happening last year and, and make some improvements. So this year, we will be moving from community or from individual stops. So instead of maybe six or eight individual stops within a neighborhood, we're moving to community stops where there'll be one or two that are centrally located. This will allow us to, for our bus runs to be shorter and allow us to double up bus runs if we need to. Capacity on a school bus this year is one student per seat. So that's a reduction to 24 students on, on a 72-passenger bus. So yeah, it will look a lot different. But I don't think run times or bus stop times will change much. But in run, in route times should be shorter. So there'll be less time for students on the bus.
And what kind of supervision will there be at the school for students waiting on a bus?
Well, if they're at the school, they'll be in class until they're dismissed to go out to the bus. That won't change. If they're, if they're on a route that, that has a double route and they need to wait for that bus to come back, then schools will be holding them in some of our larger assembly areas where they can be supervised. That may be cafeterias or gymnasiums.
What will remote learning days look like?
During remote learning days, there will be concurrent instruction for both, well, for all students. This instruction will involve new learning. It will likely encompass teacher review. So those things that we would expect in the typical classroom, but it just takes place in the remote learning. We do know that many of our schools are front-loading their schedules with the interactive synchronous and/or asynchronous sessions with their students so that the end of the day would be reserved for intervention periods and also small group instruction for students.
And will students be online from 8:30 to 3:30?
So students will receive instruction from 8:30 to 3:30, but there is not the expectation that students be engaged in online instruction during the entirety of that time.
Just a little further clarification on remote days. Will they, will the instruction be live?
There is the opportunity for both live and/or synchronous, asynchronous instruction on remote days.
What solutions does the district have or has considered for schools that are overcapacity?
Well, under the A, the current AABB model, of course, will, that's half the student population. Some of those students will choose Virtual Academy. A number of those students will choose remote learning. Even, even with some of the groups coming in full-time, we anticipate that we'll have 50 to maybe at the highest 60% of the students in on, on either the A or B days. And we've been going through in all of our schools and making sure that we can accommodate those numbers. And again, after, after doing that over the past two weeks, I'm confident that we can.
How do I find my child's schedule for middle school?
That information should be provided to the parent from the school. If you have not received that information, then I'd recommend reaching out to your child's principal.
If all students at high school need to be tested for their temperature, do parents need to wait until the temperature has been taken before they leave?
So as a part of the screening process developed by each school, most schools are requesting and have been urged to consider kids being dropped off, that they're screened in their car before they get out of the car so that the parent doesn't leave and needs to come back. So generally, that's the expectation. If kids come in off of the bus and then they're screened and have a temperature, then they will move to our cove or isolation area to wait for their parent or an emergency contact to be contacted. And I want to use this opportunity to reiterate that, you know, we may have an increased need to contact families to come and get their, their children. And so we want to make sure that families are providing the school with additional contacts for adult caregivers that can come and pick up children who might not screen to be able to enter the building or who might be sick.
And may have touched on this in your answer. Will parents need to turn around and pick up their child if the temperature reading is high?
Right, so like, right, like I just shared, it would probably, it'll be better, although it might not, it might take more time. We're thinking for parents, it'll be better to have the temperature taken and the screening done prior to them getting out of the car for that reason.
If inclement weather occurs, rainy, very cold, how will middle school band classes practice?
So if there is inclement weather, then the activities will be scheduled for the inside. And so at that time, students with woodwind and brass instruments would not be able to play. But there would be other things that the teacher would be able to engage students in. And then also as a clarification before, actually, marching band practice will begin on October the 12th once students return.
And so if they're inside the classroom, they will not be removing their masks to practice?
No. And, and also within the protocol that we've established, all the seats would be facing in one direction. Typically, in a band classroom, you have an arced formation. But with our guidance, that it, it would not be in arc formation. They would all be in a straight line. They would all be facing one direction and they would be masked at, at that time. Only if there were to be instances when there would be the ability to play inside, it would be where classrooms are at less than 50% capacity and in very, very large spaces. And so that's not consistent with all the, the room, the band rooms that we have in the district.
For students who wear removable braces and retainers, will they be given the opportunity to remove their braces and retainers per their planned treatment schedule? If so, this will require removal of masks. Will this be allowed?
Absolutely. If a student needs to do something like that or also take a drink of water or, you know, something like that, that, that's going to be fine. But we know that that would be a momentary removal. And of course, we're also requiring six-foot distancing even with the masks. So if there's a moment of taking the mask off or something like that, that'll be fine. They just need to communicate that with their, whoever's providing them supervision at that time, their teacher or whoever.
Will there be extended time when transitioning from class to class in high school?
If there was a need for extended time, then yes, it would be provided.
How are restrooms being sanitized?
Well, again, we've developed procedures in accordance with the CDC guidelines and we are cleaning and disinfecting restrooms daily with products that are on the EPA's approved list for fighting COVID-19. In addition to that, all schools have checklist that are posted. This way, you know that custodians have been by the restroom. They've disinfected the high-touch areas and that the restrooms are in order. So we've certainly added additional procedures that will be done daily in addition to the normal cleaning and disinfecting in the evenings.
For students who have to quarantine, if there's not a remote option in Plan A available, will that student have to make up a week or two's worth of work?
So when we talk about remote, most often what we talk about or what we're referencing is online learning. Remote by definition really truly means when a student is learning off-site. So if a student in Plan A has to quarantine, then we would work with that family to support that child in having access to their instruction. It may take a paper pencil form. It may be where there are some asynchronous opportunities for learning that would be provided. The thing that we don't want to do is to penalize the student for being sick.
Will children with special needs be required to wear masks on the bus?
Yes. I can go on and add another clarification. But if we have a student with special need that includes transportation as a related service and they cannot wear a face mask and have a face shield option or another face covering with accommodations, then we can support with other transportation options such as contracted transportation. But all students on the bus will have to wear the cloth face covering. So the bus is not accessible to those who can't wear that. We'll just have to find another transportation option if a child is eligible for that. And contact your child's case manager or special ed teacher to find that out.
For high schools, what time will the school day end or dismissal time?
For high schools, the school day will end at 3:40.
Will the cleaning materials used to kill and prevent COVID-19 be just as good for killing bacteria?
Excuse me. They are. We've, we've actually got. They are, we've, we've actually got three products that we use. In our custodial cleaning, we have a product that we buy in bulk. And in addition, we have disinfecting wipes that we, that we stock in the cafeteria. And these can be ordered and distributed based on availability.
Okay. If a high school student is driving themselves to school with no parent present in the car, what will be the procedure for checking temperature?
So at our high schools, there will be screening for students who park themselves and, you know, park in, in their parking lot and before coming into the building. So there'll be multiple screening options at our high schools at multiple different doors. So look for that to be announced by your particular school.
With cleaning supplies still hard to come by, will there be enough to continue cleaning schools for face-to-face learning?
The, the school system's been planning for several months and, and has purchased adequate amounts of supplies and will continue to purchase, but we're, we're very confident that we have enough cleaning supplies as well as PPE.
Okay. How will the number of children in a high school, this question is hundreds of children, switching classes at the same time follow safe social distancing?
Well, a lot of that will require monitoring and supervision by teachers and staff. But we've also done a lot to prepare our high schools and middle schools for that reopening. And I would, I would say that they, they're probably going to look a lot like the grocery stores and retail stores that we've all been out and seen, you know, where there are directional errors. And in some cases, there may be one-way hallways or one-way stairwells. You know, we've done a lot to try to break down large numbers of, or of kids congregating in one area. There are reminders all over the school about safe social distancing, including stickers on the floor indicating where you need to stand if you're waiting in line for lunch or for, in the main office or in student support.
Okay. If a student wants to remain in remote learning, who do they contact?
They would need to contact their, the parent would need to contact their child's principal.
Okay. Is it possible to socially distance in a classroom of eighteen to twenty, and is it doable in high schools like Hoggart?
It is. There may be cases where some of those larger classes have had to switch with maybe another, another teacher that had a larger room. But again, I can't say enough about our schools and our teachers and, and how creative they've been in to, to make sure that we are social distancing and setting up their rooms for that and, and getting prepared.
Okay. And I know we've touched on this, but for families just joining us, can students choose to stay in remote learning?
So families can make that choice for their child while in Plan B. But when we transition to Plan A, there will need to be further discussion. At this time, the only option that we've been able to determine would be virtual academy.
Will students' desks have plexiglass partitions around their desk's perimeter?
Generally, students who will be wearing their masks and maintaining at least six feet of distancing will not need that additional measure, keeping in mind that plexiglass on every desk would need to be cleaned in between every student. And while we want to make sure that cleaning is appropriate, we also need to make sure it's efficient so that it can be appropriate. For anyone in a high-traffic area, such as maybe an office space or a student support space, there may be a plexiglass. And then for some students who have accommodations where they might be wearing a shield and then a face shield, but then have additional distancing, they may be using a she, a, a plexiglass partition. In addition, we may have students using plexiglass partitions if they are accessing a special education services, a service such as speech-language therapy or service for children with hearing impairment.
Okay. How will teachers be protected throughout the day?
I'll take that one. It's, as a health person, pretty broad question. So I, I'll start with health, health parameters. One of the best ways that we can support our teachers and our other educators is to ensure that everyone in the building is following the three Ws first and foremost. The best protection that we have against transmission is wearing of cloth face coverings. And the more we require that among all staff and all students, the more we are protecting our educators so they can continue to teach. So that, that would be first and foremost. Another way that, that I will offer that we are supporting our educators would be through the provision of self-care and resiliency work. And I can ask Krista and Jackson, our director for student support, to speak about that for a minute, because I think if we forget about the social, emotional well-being and the, the mental well-being of our folks, then we're forgetting about the whole person.
So since the summer, we've been offering wellness sessions to teachers and principals, and those are twice a week right now. Teachers can log on with two of our student support specialists and learn about wellness activities, stress-reducing activities, and we will continue those as the year goes on.
Thank you. Several questions about the block schedule. How was the decision made to move middle school off the block schedule they are currently on?
What I'll share is that careful consideration was given to the amount of instructional time that students were receiving. We want to ensure that students have access to at least six and a half hours of instruction every day. And we want to make sure that teachers have adequate time to cover the entirety of the curriculum for students as well.
Okay. How rigorous will the online classes be for high school students?
We expect that the rigor of all of our courses will be comparable to the rigor prior to our emergency closing last year. We know that it will look different, it will feel different, there are definitely some challenges around that. But the expectation is that our teachers deliver a high-quality curriculum that engages our students in high-quality learning tasks that have the appropriate level of rigor associated with, with both.
Where will meals be served?
The, well, meals will be, the, the decision on where students will eat is, is school-based. And a lot of schools are looking at serving and eating in the cafeteria. Some schools are going to start out with students eating in their classroom. I will say, all meals will be, there'll be a limited menu, and the meals will be individually packaged and served to students either through the serving line or to the classroom.
Will students be using their lockers and how will they keep, maintain six feet distancing?
I think it's locker use at the schools, I think, will be dependent upon the particular high school and their management of ensuring the six-foot distancing. So I'm not sure that we would have a district response to that, but if anybody else knows more information, please jump in.
I, I would just only add that our middle and high school students are using their lockers less and less frequently. And from a facility standpoint, in the most recent renovations, we've removed them at middle and high school levels because they're not being used. Under the current AABB schedule, or any schedule under the current pandemic, I, I do think it's, you know, a best practice for students to keep their belongings with them and certainly not share belongings. And so not using lockers at, at middle and high school, I think, would be a, a good idea, unless it was required for some of the vocational classes.
Okay. What is the proactive plan when a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19?
So our communications about screening include communication ahead of coming in through screening at the school level. So if a staff member knows that they have had exposure or a diagnosis, or they have symptoms, they're encouraged to alert their school and not come in and identify that at screening. We're also encouraging that for students and for parents. It's really going to be helpful for parents to prescreen their kids before sending them to school that morning. It's helpful to have the attestation for bus riders because that's a reminder and, but that screening still happens when they get to school. So it's going to be helpful for all parents to certainly reach out to the school if you know that your child has been exposed before sending them to school. If you know that they have a diagnosis, please don't send them to school. And if they're experiencing symptoms, keep them at home. Feel free to contact the school nurse or your healthcare provider and talk about what you should do depending upon your child's symptoms and depending upon the nature of your concerned exposure.
What is the protocol when a single or multiple cases of COVID are identified in a classroom?
So we are very closely abiding by the public health toolkit that's provided to us by the state public health. And it does identify that if we have any, any contacts or any positive cases, that depending upon the numbers, we certainly interact with our public health officials. In fact, our school nurses in all of our schools, we have forty-one school nurses for forty-five schools, so every school has an identified nurse if they don't have it full-time. But with forty-one positions in forty-five schools, we nearly have full-time in every location. Those, every one of those school nurses are public health employees inside of our buildings, and that's this year and every year. And so our nurses will be the first ones identified when there is a case in the building, whether it's a student or staff. And they will help with communicating and contact tracing and determining if there's considered to be a cluster or an outbreak, and they will direct our options at that point.
Will the district need volunteers to do the health screenings?
We have been discussing the, the number of staff or the number of students, and then how that impacts the number of volunteers that might need to be on campus or might not. We initially want to get started with our necessary individuals on campus, but quite honestly, we know that volunteers play a really important role in how we carry out business in a school setting. And so we're quickly trying to identify the best ways to utilize volunteers to help, help make sure everything happens while not terribly increasing the numbers of, of individuals we have in the building. So stay tuned on that one. Does anybody else want to add anything in?
For children who cannot wear a mask for long periods of time, what is the solution to assist them?
Okay, well, it's me again. So we understand that, you know, for some of our individuals, and even at the high school level, some of our students, whether they have special needs or special respiratory concerns, it's, it's a different type of being when you have to wear the cloth face covering all the time. We understand that. As mine keeps sucking into my mouth, the more I talk. So we, we have provided our teachers with some parameters on how to have mask breaks and how to safely do that. So of course, having them for five minutes at a time, but making sure that kids are stationary when that's happening, so they're not walking around. And if you have a concern that your child can't wear a mask all the time and that the mask breaks might not be enough, and having a break dear, while they're eating might not be enough, then certainly reach out to your school and talk about your concerns because there can be some accommodations built in, but it won't be that children or students don't have to wear a mask and some are going to be around the building without face coverings. That won't be, we can't do that because of the public health concerns, and it, that wouldn't sufficiently protect your child or any other individual. So please talk with your school if you have concerns.
Okay. Can students bring their lunch to school?
Students can bring their lunch to school. However, I would encourage students to try out the cafeteria. Our lunch and breakfasts are great. And the best part is, they're free. Federal waivers have been extended through December thirty-first of this year, so we will be feeding all children eighteen years of age and younger for free. So you may, of course, you can bring your lunch to school, but try out the cafeteria as well.
Okay. And I think you spoke to this a little bit earlier, Mr. Anderson, but how are cafeteria staff making sure the food is safe to eat and free from germs?
Sure. Yeah, as you, as you might imagine, with any restaurant, our cafeteria has to follow very strict guidelines from the USDA as well as state and local health department. So we will be following those guidelines in our preparation of food. And then we will be individually packaging meals, whether it's breakfast or lunch. So when meals are served to the students, they will be individually packaged.
Okay. When the county transitions to Plan A, will the parents have the option to transfer their student to the virtual academy at that time?
We're asking any parent who believes that they may want their child to remain virtual the entirety of the year, to go ahead and make application to the virtual academy. That just lets the district know how many families are interested. And then as seats become available, we can offer that to the parent, but the parent does not have to accept at that time. But it would be, we are, again, recommending that parents go ahead and make application to the virtual academy at this time.
Okay. For high school students who only have two classes, will those students be required to stay for the full school day, or may they leave after they finish their two classes?
For high school students who are operating on a shortened day, they would not be required to stay the entirety of the day.
Okay. And will middle schools provide hot lunches for students? Will the meals be hot?
We will. At lunch, there'll be a hot and a cold option.
Okay. For fixed furniture classrooms, such as science labs, how will students be placed and social distancing kept in place?
Oh, most of the fixed furniture in a, in a science lab is the casework around the perimeter. The tables in the center of the room are flexible, are movable, and we've set up quite a few science labs, as well as computer labs, which are laid out generally the same way. And we have been able to accommodate the anticipated number of students with six-foot social distancing.
Okay. Will students be keeping their current schedules?
In terms of the current courses, yes, students would maintain their current courses. In terms of the, the times, there is the, there may be some school students who would experience a change in the schedule, but they would remain in their same courses.
Okay. Is there a place that parents can go to read the guideline sheets on the chemicals and disinfectants that are being using, being used to clean the schools?
All of the safety data sheets for any, any chemicals or any cleaning products that we're using in our, our facilities are at the building. Every school maintains Every school maintains a safety data sheet book. And those safety data sheets are available for review from any of the staff or public.
Will windows be open in all classrooms daily?
No, that's a very good question. I appreciate it. Gives me the opportunity to explain. We, we do not want windows open in our classrooms. And the reason is, we are providing outdoor air and increased ventilation through our HVAC systems. Over the past six months, we've had the opportunity to do a lot of preventive maintenance and upkeep, repair, and essentially tune up all of our equipment. But we've also had the opportunity to evaluate our systems to provide filtration at the maximum level. We've increased the fresh air intake in all of our, in all of our buildings, so that we have more fresh air, a more frequent turnover of air within the building. And the important thing is that the air coming in through our system, it's actually filtered and conditioned, as opposed to opening up the outdoor or opening up a window. That air may present some other problems with humidity, insects, or, or other allergens.
If a student will not return to school through the AABB schedule, is the Virtual Academy the only online learning option for students?
So in Plan B, students have been, or families have been given the option of allowing their student to remain in remote learning. Once we do transition to Plan A, at this time, the only discussion in terms of a full online option has been Virtual Academy. And I know there's other questions about enrolling in Virtual Academy. We are, again, encouraging families, if they have an interest in their child not returning to face-to-face instruction, to go ahead and make application. And even if they're not ready to make the transition now. And the reason we ask this is because as we add students, schools are having to rework their master schedules. And so anticipating the numbers ahead of time, will let principals prepare better to, to make those changes to the schedule.
Will the virtual school still be open in January?
So we, we don't, as a district, have a virtual school. We have had conversations, just preliminary ones, about making application to the virtual school. If we do apply for a virtual school and it's approved by the state, then in all likelihood, it would either open in January, the beginning of the semester, or the following school year.
If a child has a bladder problem, can they still use the restroom when needed?
Absolutely. We, we, it is not going to be beneficial for anyone for us not to pay attention to any concerned medical or otherwise that our students have. So absolutely.
And I know we talked about this a little bit, but could we address again how restrooms will be cleaned after each student uses them?
Again, we've developed procedures in accordance with the guidelines. And those procedures, we are deep cleaning all facilities daily, as well as we have checklist in place for restrooms in particular, where custodians will be checking those no more than on an hour, or no less than on an hourly basis. And we'll be wiping down and disinfecting hot-touch areas within those facilities.
How does a remote learning student attend PE when others are attending in person?
So there are going to be classes and periods of time where live streaming is not going to be possible. And so those students would receive their instruction asynchronously. But we do have students currently who are remote and are able to participate in our health and PE classes through online activities.
And what are the new in-person school day hours?
So for middle schools, they're in, in high schools, their instructional day begins at 8:30 and they dismiss at 3:40. Essentially, it's a 10 minutes in addition to last year's school hours. And then for elementary schools, they begin at 7:50 and they dismiss at 2:30. And that's an additional 10 minutes as well.
And how does a parent find out if the bus will pick up their high schooler and when and where?
Great question. We are working very hard right now to finalize our bus routes. We hope to have those published on the transportation website. We're going to ask schools to include on their website a link to that, the published routes. They will, they will be out any day now, but I promise no later than, than the 7th. And once, but I'll also mention that there's a parent portal app that's available for download on any Android or Apple phone. And we actually have that live. So, you know, you could pull it up now and you could enter your student information. And you could, you could see the route and see those times. It, it, it may change. We're still, we're still finalizing it. But, but it'll give you a really good idea of when and of the time and location of those bus stops.
What will be done for students who must isolate and quarantine due to infection at school?
I'm wondering if that question is, what will be done instructionally? Or what will be done to support the timeline of their isolation? Should we go for both?
Probably both.
Okay. All right, I'll take Clark, and then I'll hand it off to Dr. Smith. So first and foremost, the contact tracing and supports for any situation for a student and staff will be handled by our school nurses, which is an important reason why our school nurses will not be the only ones responsible for screening our students every day and won't necessarily be the ones responsible for manning our coves or isolation rooms. They are going to be communicating with families about any positive cases and supporting them and understanding the timeline for isolation, and then helping them access any necessary medical resources or services.
And to support a student who is not, not able to attend school because of isolation, well, excuse me, because of quarantine, we would engage that student and their family in remote learning at that time.
Will high school students be allowed to be at the bus stop alone? And does the form, the, the attestation form saying that they will check their child at home suffice?
Yes, students will be allowed to be at the bus stop alone. And, and the attestation form is done once for the entire year. It's not, it's not something that has to be done daily. Once that form is submitted, the parent is attesting to, they will be doing the symptom screening at home before the student leaves to come to the bus stop. But yes, bus, they can come to the bus stop alone.
If a student is in Group A and remote on Wednesday, what will that student do on Thursday and Friday?
So the student would be remote on Thursday and Friday. And they would have the opportunity to continue their instruction concurrently on those days. And so that would mean that there would be opportunities for both synchronous and asynchronous learning on those days.
If a student runs out of data on their hotspot that was provided by the district, how will they be able to connect to remote learning?
The hotspots that the district provided have unlimited data. Once they reach a certain threshold, I want to say it's like 23 gigs, it will throttle. This is why we strongly encourage the students only to use the hotspots for instruction and not for other, other reasons or purposes.
Are there any district staff who will be wearing or be required to wear face shields and goggles? Or other PPE supports?
So the PPE used by staff will either be dependent upon the staff comfort level and request, and could also be as an accommodation based on any medical concerns they may also have. But it could also be based on the job function or the functions of the job that they're fulfilling. So for example, a staff member, well, for example, we know that cloth face masks protect others. But wearing a cloth face mask and a shield can actually be a protection for the person wearing it. So there might be some staff who are wearing both because they need increased protection or are interested in increased protection. I don't know of anyone who's going to be wearing goggles, but certainly I'd be interested in that. The shield does protect the individual from getting respiratory droplets in their eyes. And, and so that kind of fits the same function. But we do not, per CDC guidance and the state toolkit, we do not advise the use of a face shield in isolation of other accommodations, such as using a cloth face mask or additional distancing, or, you know, maybe even plexiglass areas. There will be some staff, though, that are wearing shields and potentially using a plexiglass partition to support students with hearing impairments or to support students during speech and language services or therapy. So if you see that around the building, it will be for a particular purpose. But that will not be how that staff member engages throughout the entire school day.
Plan A has been mentioned several times tonight. Has a date or timeframe been determined when the district would transition to Plan A?
There is not. We are first looking at Plan B. And we're also in communication, constant communication with the health department. And so we, at that point, we will then be bringing back data and options for our board members.
Does the CDC recommend mask breaks?
Yes, there, and also our state public health toolkit suggests that we consider. It recommends, it doesn't require. It recommends that we consider mask breaks. And it does give some parameters. And as with most things in the toolkit, there's the suggestion that we reach out and collaborate with our public health experts. And everything that we've created for New Hanover County schools, based on the public health guidelines, have included our public health leaders, such as our Assistant Director for Public Health over school nursing, which is Carla Turner, and then our school nurse supervisors, who support all the school nurses in the district.
Thank you. How early will the screening process start for parents who are dropping students off?
I think that's going to depend on the schedule the school sets, but certainly reach out to your school to find out how early screening will start.
Will bell covers and appropriate masks be purchased for band students countywide so bands can practice?
Yes, we have already processed an order for bell covers and are waiting for them to come in.
What is the temperature range that parents should consider as sick and not send their student?
So students or any other person coming to the school should not have a temperature of 100.4 or higher.
How will it be possible if parents do drop off and wait for temperature checks at schools, for instance, New Hanover High, when cars are on major thoroughfares, streets?
So for particular schools, I would, such as Hanover, right on, on Market, I would reach out to the school or look to hear from them on how drop off will be handled because they are considering in all of their screening procedures where the screening stations will be set up. So look to hear from them on those specifics, and certainly feel free to reach out and ask about that in the meantime.
I know we mentioned this, just one more time. When will the bus routes be published so families can determine if they will be using the bus or carpooling?
Yes, we're going to get those out as early as possible next week, but no later than the 7th.
Will the sheriff's department, SROs, be returning when the students return?
Yes, in fact, our SROs have already been working in the buildings and have, have already been on site.
Will students receive the free breakfast and lunch through the end of the year?
Students right now will receive free breakfast and lunch through the end of the calendar year, December 31st. We have not had any word yet whether the federal waiver will be extended beyond that time.
And we have about 20 minutes left. So just to repeat, please call in with your questions or enter them in the Facebook Live chat. Will high schools be doing any screening for infectious, infectiousness with antigen tests?
No, not at this time. We're not going to be, first of all, we aren't requiring any type of tests. We will engage in screening, but we don't even require COVID testing. It's up to every individual, and when it comes to minors, it's up to the parents whether they want to have their child tested. But we do require the isolation through screening if there's been exposure or a diagnosis or there are symptoms that are, that are relative to COVID-19.
Who should a parent contact if their child is seated less than six feet away from other students?
I would say the, the parent should first start with the student's teacher. And that would be the, the person that could, you know, direct or, or correct that the quickest. And if then, if that doesn't resolve the issue, then they should contact the principal or assistant principal, someone in administration.
Will parents be notified when COVID cases have been identified in a school?
Yes, we have already been publishing on our NHCS.net webpage, under Ready, Set, Return, cases that have already been identified in our buildings. We are also planning to continue the same communication that we have been sharing with staff, planning to share that out with families regarding any positive cases that occur in the building. I do want to reiterate that I verified today with our public health that as of, as of now, we still have not had transmissions occur in the school setting. Any individuals who have been in the school setting that have tested positive have been exposed in other places other than the school building.
If a student is exposed, how quickly will the family be notified?
Notifications will be done on the same day and probably, you know, certainly as soon as communication can be reached with the families upon exposure. So it is, it is our expectation that those will be done certainly within an hour, but definitely same day. There won't be situations where you hear that, that we were knowledgeable of an exposure on one day and you hear about it on a different day. And so that's another reason why we're thankful that our school nurses, our public health staff, they have been trained in the type of contact tracing they need to handle for a school setting and will be helping school administrators make those contacts.
What kind of testing or procedures are in place for monitoring the air after the disinfecting is done in buildings?
There, there's not any indoor, indoor air testing that's required. You know, the, the products that we are using are, you know, common household products, such as such as, you know, Clorox or, or Lysol wipes.
Are school bus drivers going to have shields and masks?
We are requiring face masks and we are offering face shields to all bus drivers that want them.
When the district does transition to Plan A, will students in the Virtual Academy be required to return to school in person or will they remain in the Virtual Academy?
When a, when a decision is made for the district to begin Plan A, students in Virtual Academy will be allowed to continue in Virtual Academy.
And we have covered this, but again, this, several questions are coming in repeatedly. How will contact, contact tracing be handled?
Contact tracing in a school setting is handled with the support of our school nurses. And if our school nurses need the support, they reach out to their public health partners in contagious disease at the Health Department. And just as a reminder, our school nurses are public health employees working within our schools.
How will testing for gifted students occur and other special programs?
Dr. Murray?
And then I'll follow up on Special Ed.
Testing for gifted students or those wishing to apply for AIG services will continue as it always has. Our students take the COGAT achievement or IQ test and then they move through the match screening process, which includes work samples and recommendations from parents and teachers. So that process will not change. The middle and high school typically move through that process in the spring, so we don't see, foresee any issues with that.
And regarding any testing or comprehensive evaluations for students with disabilities or suspected of having disabilities, those evaluations have already restarted and we will continue to do those as we always have within the school setting. Our evaluators, such as our school psychologists and speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists and the like, are already working within their evaluation parameters and with additional precautions so they can assess kids one-on-one as necessary.
Will the district be providing flu vaccines to teachers and/or students?
It is our expectation that that will happen as it always has. Dr. Faust and I met with public health a couple of weeks ago and that was one of our questions as well. And at that time, our public health here in New Hanover County had not received their flu vaccine shipments, but they did have every plan to still hold clinics as they have in the past.
Why aren't we testing staff and students for COVID?
Well, I think that's probably a better question for public health officials, but we follow their guidance. And public health officials at the local and the state level are not recommending mass testing, instead believe that the testing should be used for more critical situations and based on identified need.
If virtual academy seats are full, when and if the, the district transitions to Plan A, how will parents access the asynchronous learning?
We do not anticipate that virtual academy seats for middle and high school students will be full when the district makes the decision to transition. But again, we are encouraging families to indicate their preference now so that principals can be aware because it will require changes in their master scheduling. And so if we know and can anticipate that, then principals can plan proactively for it.
And this is a topic we covered, but for parents just joining us, on the other two or three days of remote learning, what will those days look like for my student and will they be receiving the same instruction as the other students attending in person?
So I think many would agree, it's very difficult to provide to students who are not physically present the exact same instruction as those who are present. So it will look different, but when it comes to whether or not teachers are addressing the standards and whether or not teachers are covering the content, that will remain the same. And so when students are on those remote learning days, the expectation is that concurrent instruction occurs. It can be asynchronous if, if appropriate, especially at high school. We recognize that there are going to be some courses for which we're not going to be able to provide live instruction. And I think the example I gave a little earlier might have been around band or, or PE. But the overall expectation is that there is the opportunity for asynchronous instruction. So that live instruction as well for those families.
We're getting a number of questions about parents who would like more specifics regarding middle school schedule. What would a typical day attending in school look like and what would a typical day in remote learning look like?
So the schedule in and of itself would mirror, for the most part, on the AA, BB days, what it looked like prior to our emergency school closing. So students would have their four core contents and there are also their two electives. We would not expect to see, of course, as much transition and of course, students would be socially distanced. There would be the expectation for students who are home, for them to receive that concurrent instruction in the flipped instructional model that the district is employing. And then on Wednesday, schools are front-loading their schedules. So there would be, again, that concurrent instruction, but it would primarily occur in the morning so that in the afternoon, teachers could hold small groups and deliver interventions in those specialized services. So, you know, a good example of that would be if the academically gifted teacher needed to pull together a small group for a specific lesson, that could occur during that Wednesday in the, in the afternoon.
Since middle school students will not attend school in person on Wednesdays, when will they receive AIG instruction?
So the expectation is that that instruction occurs throughout, but we do recognize that we do have some students who receive more extensive levels of services. And so it, it is possible that that may be delivered on that Wednesday, but for the most part, it would be the expectation that those services and that differentiation occur throughout the child's schedule. You know, we recognize that our children who are academically gifted are academically gifted at all times, so not just simply at certain points within their instructional day.
Are students being marked absent for the school day if they complete virtual learning in the afternoon or evening?
No, we have been working on attendance processes with our schools and understand the need for a lot of flexibility during this time. And students operating or accessing their education through virtual means are able to have time to complete that outside of a traditional school schedule, so they are not being marked absent. If you find that that's happening, that would be a mistake, so please reach out to your child's teacher. And we realize that, you know, some of this seems like they're just difficult answers and difficult responses, but truly a lot of work's gone into trying to consider the aspects from the student side and the parent's side. So please continue to reach out to your schools if you have questions or concerns like that.
And does the district's air conditioning system bring in fresh air from the outside?
Yes, as I mentioned before, it does. And we've, over the past several months, we've had the opportunity to go in and really optimize the performance of our HVAC system to bring in the maximum amount of outdoor air possible and increase the turnover of air in the building during the school day.
Will teachers and students who have tested positive for COVID be required to provide proof of a negative test before returning to school?
No, that is not required for returning to school.
We have time for just a couple more questions. Mr. Anderson, if you could talk, we're getting several questions about the six-foot social distancing and is that six feet in all angles around each student? If you could talk a little more about this, the social distancing in the classrooms?
Yes, it's, it's, you know, essentially a six-foot radius around the person. And so when we're in the, when we're in the classroom, you look at, you know, where that student's chair is located and we're measuring six foot from the center of that chair all the way around the student and making sure that there's no one, no, would be sitting, you know, within that circle. I will say too, that, you know, again, I mentioned, you know, the teachers are doing such a great job. As you can imagine, during the school day, it, it's, it's hard to keep, keep those chairs in the exact spot. Teachers have gotten creative. Some have used the, the floor tile pattern, you know, to identify where that student should be sitting. Others have, you know, put a, put a mark on the floor with tape. But those are ways that teachers can monitor what's going on in the classroom and easily see if, you know, if, if those students have, have moved away from that mark.
How will students safely collaborate for teamwork on school projects and interact for social, socialization?
So teachers will have to make some difficult decisions about instruction. We understand the importance of maximizing collaboration in the face-to-face time that we have with students. And we also know that we want to create opportunities for students to engage in project-based learning that allows them to evaluate, synthesize and, and be creative, but also while maintaining that social distance. So our teachers are going to have to be very creative in their spaces in, in terms of that, but I'm, I'm very confident that they can.
And what are the required school hours on remote learning days?
So we are providing students with the opportunity for six and a half hours of instruction. And so, again, as I said earlier, the expectation is not that a child be tethered to a computer screen for six and a half hours a day, but that there be learning opportunities throughout the day that would represent six and, six and a half hours of instructional time for that, for that student.
And if a parent has completed the application for the Virtual Academy, when can they expect to hear back in terms of their student's schedule and more information?
If a parent has completed the application, then, and they haven't been notified, I'd say within two to three days, if they could reach out to their child's principal, then they would be able to let them know where they are in the process.
And how frequently will classrooms be cleaned by custodians at the end of the day or during the day?
Well, classrooms will be cleaned and disinfected daily by the custodial staff. In addition to that, the, the desk and high-touch areas will be wiped down with a disinfectant between classes.
Okay, thank you. And that is the conclusion of our, our question time. So we will take any unanswered questions and supply answers and they will go on a, on our district website under the Ready, Set, Return FAQs. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Faust now to close for us.
I want to thank everyone for their time, spending it this evening with us. We want to, again, reiterate the fact that we are promoting safety and will make sure that we're doing our best as you will also encourage your, your students to make sure that they are wearing their masks, they're washing their hands and that they are remaining the six feet for social distancing. Again, we want to thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.